Good evening. Thanks for being here this evening. I call this meeting, this committee, the whole meeting to order. Councilors Winter, Benton, and Harris are excused this evening. All other councilors are present. Would you please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Sanchez?
(inaudible) 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 Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff if you haven't yet. Tonight is the first of three public hearings the council is required to hold on the city's operating budget. Tonight's meeting will focus on the social goal budgets which include cultural services, family and community services, fire, police, parks and recreation, and senior affairs among others. On May 2nd, the council will hold a second public hearing to discuss the city's physical goal budgets which include aviation, DMD, planning, transit, and others. At tonight's meeting and the meeting on May 2nd, we will receive public comment. The council will hold a third committee of the whole meeting on May 16th to consider amendments or floor substitutes to the bills on tonight's agenda. No public comment will be taken at the May 16th meeting. At the end of the May 16th meeting, the budget as amended or substituted will be sent to the Monday, May 20th city council meeting for adoption. Public comment will be taken at the May 20th council meeting. We appreciate everyone, appreciate everyone being here this evening. Before we go to public comment, the city clerk is here this evening and we'd like to ask councilors if you have any questions of her. If we could please ask them now as she has to attend another meeting shortly. Councilors, are there any questions? Of Clerk Dewick? Seeing none, thank you for being here this evening, we appreciate it. Good luck with your next meeting. So we will now go to public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes. The green light on the podium will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. At two minutes, it will turn red and ring to signal your time is up. First speaker is Damon Kapanowski, followed by Leland Taylor. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Damon Kapanowski and I'm the proud general manager of the Sheraton Uptown and the current chair of the Uptown Progress Team. I first would like to thank Councilor Diane Gibson for all her support. Yesterday, we sent out a press release and I have a copy if you like. I'm also here today to say let's keep Uptown Uptown. Uptown is a bright spot of Albuquerque. As an area, we generate $40 million in GRT, $12 million in commercial real estate taxes, and over $2 million in lodgers tax. In Albuquerque, we have 144 hotels that raise about $13 million in lodgers tax. The five hotels in the Uptown area generate 15% of that fund. My ask today is let's keep Uptown Uptown. We need to continue to invest in this area. Each councilor should also have the same vested interest as your constituents dine, shop, and entertain their friends and families in Uptown. We ask that we add more security and safety measures such as bicycle police and security cameras that are connected to the real-time crime center along with signage stating that this area is under watch. Last year, our city visited other cities such as San Francisco that took measures like this and they saw a drop in crime. Uptown is one of Albuquerque's bright spots, so let's keep it this way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Leland Taylor, followed, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Varejo.
Thank you for those comments. I just wanted to echo again that I don't have any hotels in my district. Thank you.
Looking forward to that. Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, councilors. I really find this amazing. We have this guy come up here about crime, you've got budget for crime, you have crime statistics, you've got the highest crime in the nation, and at the same time, you make it an immigrant-friendly city, which is an invitation to crime. You set examples that you don't follow federal government rules, which baffles me. Why, you know, as city councilors, you should be the paramount of following government rules and the laws. And it's very clear that the federal has the control over immigration. And by throwing your noses at it, you're putting, letting illegal aliens take jobs, burden our medical system, burden our schools, drug trafficking, and everything else. It's wiping out this state. The decimation is unbelievable. And the city council really needs to take that to task and try to figure out how to fix that. Imagine how much your crime would drop if they didn't have these people running around. And it's really interesting to have requests for assistance with community policing when City Hall's working against you by allowing these people to run over the place. I mean, this, okay, it's an asylum city. Well, who's running it? The inmates? The other question I have is budget. And this is the art budget. And I'm still trying to figure out where the city got 133, 135 million when they only got 70-some million from the feds. Where'd the rest of the money come from? How does that budgeting system work in this city? The public never voted on this. So what kind of confidence does that instill in your management? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Sarah Herto, followed by John Chavis. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and councilors. My name is Sarah Herto. I'm the Urban Conservation Director for the Nature Conservancy here in Albuquerque. We launched the Urban Conservation Program in 2016 with a vision to fundamentally change the way our relationship between the city and nature so that both natural solutions and conservation are recognized as essential components to healthy, just, and climate resilient city. Our primary goals are to, of the program, are to reduce heat impacts particularly to vulnerable populations. A study completed two years ago by conservancy scientists shows that trees are really the most effective intervention to mitigate both heat and air quality problems. And so I'm grateful to Parks and Recreation Department Director Simon for launching the task force that looked at how we might be able to increase and build a robust urban canopy here in Albuquerque. One of those recommendations that came out of the, out of the, out of the report that we all co-authored was to consolidate people with tree skills into a single department and within the city to increase efficiency and reduce the number of trees that are being missed on regular stewardship activities. What I ask of the council tonight is that they support this initiative in reinvesting and really supporting our green infrastructure that provides residents with so many benefits. Nearly 40 years of research shows us that people need nature in their lives every day, and what better way to do that than to add trees in our canopy? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Chavis, followed by Dr. Bruce Heinrich. When I call your name, would you please come down front so you can be ready to speak? Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Jones and fellow councilors. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is John Chavis. I'm the president of the Albuquerque, the Anderson Abruzzo Albuquerque International Balloon Museum, a long name. I just want to point out, this is a budget, that per visitation, what the city spends results in a $9 per visit for our museum, and, which is cheaper than the Biopark, which is $14 per visit, and it's cheaper than the Albuquerque Museum, which is $29. So we're a real good deal when it comes to the budget. What I want to speak about is, and I've had, fortunate enough to talk to some of you, but not all of you, that I want to ask for matching funds to the state funds which were donated or appropriated for the balloon museum exhibit, for the Fiesta. The Fiesta is having its 50th anniversary and we, the state, we asked for 100,000, they allocated 90. We're asking that the city match that funds, and the foundation is taking a challenge onto itself to also match that fund so we'll have a good chunk of money when that time comes. We want to work closely with the Cultural Services Department on that. I also want to support the register position that's there. Our budget has a $6,000 line item. I don't know how they're going to do that. They work miracles there at Cultural Services. So we do support that position. I also want to point out, and the most significant item, is that last year's budget, it looks like our line item for the balloon museum is the same as last year. Last year's item, there was $240,000, I'm told, about that amount of money that was in Fund 225 for rentals. It wasn't only money for us, it was money for the other museums. That money is no longer available to the museums. In our case, that's about 25% of our budget. That has caused severe stress at the museum and among Cultural Affairs. We are in, we are, have gone through crisis mode. If you don't know it, our balloon museum manager, for this and other reason, has been reassigned. Our executive director has resigned. We're in the process of looking for a new one. Our board has threatened, some of our board has threatened to resign. We're trying to build our relationship back up. The pressures that this has caused has been tremendous. And I've heard that the council has not been, it should not be in a position to, and probably rightly so, to appropriate money that would be looked at as running the museum, so I'm not asking for that. I'm only asking your help in assisting us to reach a mutually beneficial agreement with the foundation, I mean, with the city in order so that we could overcome this challenge that this has brought about upon us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Bruce Heinrich, followed by Jean Bernstein.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, I'm Dr. Bruce Heinrich, a volunteer board member of the New Mexico Biopark Society, a biopark education volunteer and a donor to the Biopark Society. Our world-class biopark attracts over 1.3 million visitors each year, making it the state's most popular attractions for both locals and visitors. Its reputation and its AZA accreditation rely on the health and well-being of its animals. Today, I'm asking you to build on your past biopark support by allocating funds for a third veterinarian in addition to the two zookeepers that are in the current budget proposal. The biopark has relied on two veterinarians since the 1980s, then we were, when they were responsible for only the few hundred animals at the zoo. As the facility has grown to include the aquarium, botanic garden, and tingly beach, the animal population has exploded. Unfortunately, the vet staff has not grown significantly. The biopark is now home to over 16,000 animals spread across 150 acres. The biopark's vets must care for animals of every size. Sharks, eels, and other fish require the same lifesaving care that the zoo's large mammals, birds, and reptiles need. Both major surgery and routine dental exams require veterinary services. Currently, the biopark's veterinarians are stretched critically thin. If one vet gets sick or attends professional development, only one vet's available. If that remaining vet requires a day off, the biopark must rely on contract vets who do not have comparable knowledge of the facility and its animals. Just as humans do, every animal deserves the highest level of health care. By funding a third veterinary position, you will make it possible for every animal at the biopark to receive that care. You will also demonstrate your commitment to animal wellness during our 2020 AZA accreditation review. Thank you. I ask those who are in support of this proposal to stand, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all for being here. Jean Bernstein is next, followed by Tad Naminski.
Thank you, councilors. I am the owner of Flying Star Cafes, a 32-year veteran of the Nob Hill Central Avenue Corridor and past vice president of Nob Hill Main Street. We've weathered many economic cycles, but never have I seen the district and the corridor in sadder shape than it is now. I won't waste my time complaining, blaming, or ruminating on the contributing factors, but it is time to face reality of what is happening to Central Avenue and its districts. Let's remind ourselves that Central's Avenue is still Route 66. Its history, nostalgia, and romance still mean something to many people. I know that soon, many millions of dollars will be spent on developing new projects along the corridor. The city, along with the developers and entrepreneurs, is investing heavily into its future. But what about businesses that have already made their investments? Recently, more than 200 business people and property owners signed a letter written to Mayor Keller and this council pleading for relief from the endless incidences of property vandalism, filth, theft, robberies, and people exhibiting violent, threatening behaviors. These conditions have made doing business and living along this corridor extremely difficult. We are all paying for more security, repairs, cleaning. Visitors and customers from around the city, the country, and even the world have been frightened away. Many businesses have closed or have simply packed up and left. More will follow. Yet, Central is far from dead. It has always been an incubator for tender, young businesses. We are seeing the next generation of small businesses starting to try their luck. They will hopefully replace those who have closed. Don't we want to help them succeed? Don't we want our current businesses to thrive? If so, we must have help from civic leaders, our government. We cannot, they cannot, be able to muster the same funds that huge national corporations have to fence themselves off from local, from local issues. And I'm sorry, but I do have one more second or two. It's important.
One, please.
Thank you. Well, never have I, in 32 years, stood here in front of this council and asked for one thing. But this is what I'm asking for today, councilors. Let's leave the politics behind, the past, and the pretense that everything's all right. Let's recognize, admit with clarity and honesty what has happened to Central Avenue. Most importantly, let's face that Central needs serious help, and it needs it now. We need policing, we need to decrease crime. We are asking you, the mayor, this administration, to increase police presence and security along the corridor as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernstein. Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's fine. I just want to say, Ms. Bernstein, thank you so much for working with, I saw Mr. Chris Smith here earlier somewhere, and Jay Rimby and others. I know, this is the first time I've seen the Central Corridor businesses really come together, and not just to ask for something, but to do the work on their own, to sort of think about what would really make sense and to start working as a team. As you know, we've been working with everybody to sort of figure out what a budget would look like, to help add some extra money for marketing, for business development, and for security. And we were surprised to learn that there are 241 new business licenses on the Central Corridor since May of last year, far more than I think even we at the city thought there would be. And so we're anxious to hear the Police Department's presentation tonight, and then I hope to, we've got some other councilors working with us on that. I think we'll be, hope to present something to ask the community and our councilors to support, to prioritize Central this year, and we appreciate your organizing, and I look forward to working with you on it.
Thank you. Counselor Panha?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was actually, I know you're talking specifically to the ones in the Nob Hill area, but, you know, I just want to add that there's a lot of positive things happening on West Central, too. You know, we have a problem response team. Crime has been reduced significantly in the area. You know, businesses are coming together to address some of the concerns. If you look at the, some of the statistics, and maybe that's something that we should put forward, but if you look at some of the crime statistics, statistics along Central, they've really decreased significantly. So I just want to add that. So there are really some positive things happening along the corridor.
(inaudible) we don't see that day to day, so the statistics will be helpful, but our experiences are different.
Thank you. Tad Naminski, followed by Aaron Griegego, who will be our last speaker.
Thank you. My name's Tad Naminski. Today, I want to speak not only for myself, but for others, which is, I already spoke to city attorney right here just before this meeting started. Can you, can you stop speaking to city attorney right now?
No, sir, you cannot speak directly to anyone. You can address the council.
You violated Open Meeting Act, ma'am! You've been doing hush me for too long.
Mr. Naminski, I have never hushed you. Would you like to continue? Because your two minutes will expire.
Okay. So let me explain it. I spoke to city attorney before this minute started. That you, council, city of Albuquerque council, violating not only own rule, but also, I'm speaking of R. 19140 or 1955. I am, let's speak on the subject twice, which is you're not allowing only public, general public comment. That's violating state Open Meeting Act. You are violating Open Meeting Act and also own rules. I know your rules, it is unconstitutional because you operate under municipal government, municipal government, yes, I am, under the city rule, not under constitutional rule. Now, speaking about tires, imposing fee on the tire, on the, so much, $15 on the family plus. That's what caught my, really my attention. Right here, this chart shows, that is uncalled. Why don't you be more creative? Recycle rubber. Rubber can be used in construction, many deal. You can shred it. It's so much use when it comes to the rubber. We will see in the court, federal court.
Thank you, Mr. Naminski. Our next speaker is Aaron Griegego. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you, and thank you, members of the committee, the whole. On a lighter note, I come before you, I come before this evening to advocate for after-school and summer programs for the youth. There's a continuous need for organized programs in a safe environment that offer structure and positive reinforcement to these children. It's important to mention that group activities promote teamwork, which in turn builds trust, shared goals, and can build a group of adult community volunteers. After-school and summer programs may be simple, but to a single parent or to a blended family, family, logistically, it's a challenge. Having community opportunities available are rewarding and make a lasting difference in the lives of children and families. Community activities and programs can be based on a simple ABC's acronym, that affirmations build confidence. The prize in our community is our children. The common goal should be to have our children today overcome couch surfing, beat the streets, and all the while inspiring kids to set and achieve a single, simple goal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker for this evening, so we will be hearing now from Ms. Renee Martinez, the Director of Finance and Administrative Services. She's going to give us a presentation on the social goal department budgets, and after that, councilors will have an opportunity to ask questions of each department in a few moments, and I ask that you please hold your specific department questions until Ms. Martinez has completed her presentation. So it's your turn, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. Madam Chair, council members, good evening. It is my pleasure to present an overview of the proposed fiscal year 20 budget to you. The first part of the presentation will cover the budget, both sources and uses at a high level, and then the following part will present highlights for each social goal department. As each department is covered, we can pause for your questions. We have the department directors here to respond to your questions, and many have some of their staff, division directors, fiscal managers here as well to support them and you. Will that format work for you? Madam Chair?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I was talking to myself.
That's fine. There's a handout, I hope all of you have that, of the slides here. So the presentation will focus on the general fund this evening as the social goal departments, for the most part, are supported primarily by the general fund. Next Thursday, we will present the budgets for the physical departments, physical goal departments, that is, including the three of the large enterprise departments, aviation, solid waste, and transit. First and foremost, I want to recognize the professional staff in the Office of Budget and Management who have worked many in late hours over the last four months to prepare the budget. With the departure of the former budget officer at the start of the year, I was very fortunate to have these capable staff and a proven budget process on hand for me. And this slide just lists those, those staff that have been working hard, and we have our senior budget analysts here in the chambers with us, Jane Aranda and Patsy Pino, and we also have our chief economist who has presented before you a few times already, Christine Berner. I also want to recognize the fiscal managers in each department and the department directors for their engagement in the budget process and for meeting many tight deadlines. Also here to support the presentation are some of the staff in our accounting division, Pam Finelli, our controller, and Joseph Cohen, who's one of our principal accountants. So here we are in the budget calendar. I always like to go to a mall and say, where are you? So this is our where are you slide where it shows us where we are in our, in our budget process, where, what has been done already and what is ahead of us. So we made the budget call on December 10th to all the departments with a message and instructions. The departments dutifully submitted their budgets and, and their issue papers. The budget call required a couple of, required this of the departments, two issue papers reflecting an innovative way of achieving a goal, two issue papers reflecting collaboration with other departments to synergize resources, and one negative issue paper to reduce expenditures through process or service redesign. We were very happy to receive a lot of great issue papers. In fact, there were 147 of them in total. 52 were collaborative in nature, 85 in the innovative category, and 10 negative. So it took us a little time for us to review those budgets and issue papers, and then on April 1st, we submitted to you the mayor's proposed budget, and there was an introduction of the budget bill and ordinance to, to the council body. We received your questions, general questions for all departments, and have submitted responses to you, and also received very specific questions for the social departments, and we've submitted those responses to you as well. So here we are at the Committee of the Whole Social Goal Presentation. I wanted just to take a little bit of time to talk about the priorities in this budget. The mayor's fiscal year 20 proposed budget supports a number of priorities and focus areas which are listed here. Public safety is a top priority, as well as other public safety-related areas such as homelessness, substance abuse, and neighborhood safety programs. Other high priorities include youth and early childhood programs, and investments in job growth and the local economy. As we present the department budget highlights, you will hear and see the budget support for these priorities. Next slide is the resource side of the picture in our proposed budget. It's shown, it's showing our resources across all funds in both a table and a pie chart format. So for the very first time in the city's history, the budget has surpassed $1 billion. This is definitely a milestone for the city. Total operating resources for all funds is projected at $1,107 million. That is $110 million greater than what is in our fiscal year 19 original budget. That is 110 million greater than what is in our fiscal year 19 original budget. You can see that GRT, enterprise revenues, and property taxes together make up more than 65% of total city revenues. And gross receipts tax is the city's major source of revenue, comprising 413.8 million, or 37.4% of total resources for our budget in fiscal year 20. Since GRT is the city's largest source of revenue, a closer look at how the fiscal year 20 GRT budget compares to fiscal year 18, the five-year forecast developed in December, and the current fiscal year is shown here. The table lists each increment of GRT. If you look at the total line, the increase in GRT, excuse me, general fund GRT revenue is 27 million as compared to the fiscal year 19 budget, which is a 7% increase. The relatively large increase in GRT revenue is due in part to, one, a full 12 months of the new hold harmless GRT, and two, new taxes passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor this spring, in March and April. This is House Bill 6, which many of our staff and our legislative support team followed very closely throughout the legislative process. Let's talk a little bit about that new revenue. First is a tax on internet sales. The proposed budget includes 4.6 million in internet sales tax. And you can see that that's a separate line now in this table that we will track from here forward. So this represents the city's share of a fixed $24 million that the state will distribute from the state general fund for two years, fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, until the local increments are applied to these sales. So over the next two years, the taxation and revenue department will prepare their systems and operations to collect and distribute these internet taxes as specified in the legislation. The city, the good news is the city and all local governments should see a significant surge in these revenues starting in fiscal year 2022, due to the taxing of online sales that the state currently taxes and new taxes. There also is a tax on nonprofit hospitals, which were previously exempt from gross receipts tax. The proposed budget includes 2.4 million in gross receipts tax collected for that source. So all these funds, these new funds and revenues will go directly into the general fund to support the entire budget and are not dedicated to any particular department or program. What I also wanted to talk about is hold harmless. As I said, this is, fiscal year 20 will be the first year where we'll have a full year of hold harmless GRT taxes in our budget. This year we had 11 months. So the city's hold harmless gross receipts tax increment is forecasted to generate $57.9 million in the fiscal year 2020 budget, or 8.3 million more than what we budgeted in fiscal year 19. After taking into account the 1/12 required reserve, this leaves 53.1 million available for appropriation. This next slide is a drill into just our recent distribution, just to give you a sense of what we're seeing in GRT distributions this year. So this shows March 2019 GRT distributions received on April 15th. The table shows how these distributions compare by major sectors. There's not all sectors in this table, but the major sectors. And I want to point out that there is one typo in here. Under the construction sector, the percent change compared to March, last year's of the same month, March, should be negative 5.5%. We're really inflating that number by showing 24%. So apologize for that. The news is not so good, but it's better. So the March showed 5.8% growth as compared to the same month last year, and 3.4% cumulative growth from the start of this fiscal year. I highlighted in green a couple of bright spots. The high-paying professional scientific and technology services sector is showing particular strength at 18% above the same month last year. And in the food and medical, which is our hold harmless sectors, it's, the growth there or change there is notable as well, as it reflects a positive change to what had been a modest drag on GRT. This next slide then moves from sources to uses, and it shows the fiscal year 20 proposed appropriations across all funds. So net overall operating budget proposed for fiscal year 20 and is shown in two different pie charts to show how the budget is distributed by both fund type, which is the pie chart on the left, and by spending category, which is the pie chart on the right. First, by fund type, the general fund appropriations for fiscal year 20 is 641 million, which represents 54% of the total. Appropriations to enterprise funds represents the next largest portion at 19%. And then you'll see the distribution across the other fund types. If you look at the pie chart on the right, by spending category, so similar to prior years, and because city governments are very service-oriented, you would expect, and it's the case, that personal expenses is the spending category with the largest percentage at 48% of the proposed budget. With operating costs second at 38%, grants and transfers make up less than 10% each of the appropriated budget. Next is a view of the appropriations for general fund by department. So you'll see a department-by-department view of the appropriations. Police and fire departments together comprise 48% of the proposed fiscal year 20 budget, which is very close to what the budget looked like last year, and shows the city's focus on public safety. If you'll, we'll talk a little bit about the civilian, the police oversight appropriation, because it's the only one, I think, that shows a little bit of a reduction, but we'll have a slide here and we'll explain that. Next slide will show the three-eighths, the new three-eighths hold harmless tax uses for fiscal year 20. As mentioned before, when discussing the general fund GRT revenues, the total fiscal year 20 revenue projection from the three-eighths tax is 57.9 million. Of that, 53.1 million is available for appropriation after setting aside the 1/12 reserve. Of that amount available for appropriation, a total of 46.1 million is appropriated to public safety if you combine the police and fire departments together. So the breakdown of planned uses is as shown. So 29.7 million, or 55.8% is allocated towards police initiatives. 8.3 million, or 15.8% is allocated towards fire. 8.1 million, or 15.3% is allocated towards other public safety initiatives, which includes youth crime reduction and prevention programs in several departments, including cultural services, family and community services, parks and recreation, and senior affairs. Revenue recognition policy change. This has been a little bit of a discussion, both internally and with some interest in it by the press. So, an additional one-time revenue is available to budget in fiscal year 20 due to a change in accounting practices related to revenue recognition. A change in the city's revenue recognition policy from a 30-day to a 60-day modified accrual basis will become effective on July 1, 2019. This change will result in one month of estimated GRT and property tax revenue, specifically revenue distributed in August 2009 and earned in June, which is not budgeted in the original fiscal year 19 budget. For budgetary purposes, the general fund portion of this revenue, or 28.9 million, is considered and budgeted as a one-time available resource in fiscal year 2020. The chart illustrates the orphaned one month that results from this policy change. The use of the one-time funds will be covered in each department's budget highlights. The proposed budget reflects the move from a fully insured to a self-insured model for employee group medical benefits, including the 17 participating entities, which all approve and support this move. A new group self-insurance fund will be set up in fiscal year 20 for the purposes of the city's group health insurance. The initial budget of 78.1 million will cover city employees and their dependents, and also the 17 participating entities, employees, and their dependents. The medical claim appropriation is 68 million, with the remaining 10 million needed for operational costs. Estimated revenue is proposed to exceed appropriation by about 5.7 million and will go towards building the requisite reserve for the fund. The city will continue to contribute 80% towards employee insurance costs in fiscal year 20. Next slide, before we get to each department's budget highlights, we'll actually highlight some of the interdepartmental appropriations that are within our fiscal year 20 budget. One of those interdepartmental programs is what we're calling One Albuquerque Youth Connect. And that is, that is a program that has participation activities and funding across four of our social goal departments. There'll be $525,000 of appropriations towards, in the family and community services budget, 260,000 in the parks and recreation budget, 135,000 in cultural services, and 80,000 in senior affairs. There is a nice infographic that was developed to highlight some of the activities and youth programs that this money will fund. And if you don't have that infographic with you, I think there's some that are available to you. And I'm not sure, is Isaac here? I don't know if he's sent those to you, but we'll get that to you. Then also in the city workforce, to support the many employees that we have across our, across our city workforce, the budget includes a 2% cost of living allowance, and that equates to a $5.7 million investment in our workforce. We also have 500,000 of one-time monies that will support workforce recruiting in order to help the city with hard-to-recruit types of positions in the city, including in the police department. And then a 3.5% increase in contributions towards medical insurance premiums. I would note that had we stayed with a fully insured model, that actually would be an increase of 8%. So we're seeing a significant saving by moving to a self-insured model. And then, as in each year, we have CIP projects that are coming online. And that would include the Palo Duro Fitness and Aerobics Rooms, the gym at North Domingo Baca, the Biopark Exhibits, and there are a handful of information systems that are coming online as well. So with that, we're ready to go to the social goal departments. You had an opportunity to ask questions of the office of city clerk, and I really feel like she got off a little free on that one, but that's okay. If you do have questions, I'm happy to take your questions and help and get back with Katie and get back to you on that. So you have a second chance. Then we'll go with police, and then fire, family, cultural services, CPOA, economic development, parks and recreation, and senior affairs. You ready to go?
Thank you, ma'am, but I think we have some questions of you first.
Oh, okay, of course.
Counselor Sanchez, and then Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My issue is in regards to the self-insurance and healthcare. I know in the past we have looked at it. Did we ever look at going and working with the municipal league to reduce the rates even further?
Madam Chair and Counselor, I am not aware of that. However, I do have someone from HR, Mark Seist, if he'd like to come and you might be able to respond to that. Mark?
Because I do know that the municipal league offers a pool through municipalities across New Mexico, and I'm not sure if that was even looked at.
Good evening, Madam Chair, councilors. Yes, we have explored all options. As a matter of fact, the state of New Mexico, as well as the municipal league, does allow municipalities to pool within their government entity. Fortunately, we are probably in the best section in New Mexico. We, all, the majority of our employees and dependents reside within the four-county area. With municipal league, you do have to pool with other municipalities that are border communities, where care may be received outside of the state, El Paso, Colorado, Arizona. Those rates are a lot higher than the city of Albuquerque. So if you look at our comparison compared to the state of New Mexico, compared to the municipal league and our benefits as well, we have the best, most comprehensive, most reasonably priced benefit package out there.
And one other question. What was the rate that Presbyterian was going to increase the premiums by?
Through the RFP process, Madam Chair, members of the council, we went through an RFP, keeping the same benefits, keeping the same co-payments, deductibles. If we had stayed fully insured, it would have been an 8% increase.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Martinez, I'm going to fumble my way through this a little bit, but help me. I just want to understand, as I'm looking big picture and down the road, you did a great job of articulating the new online sales tax. And as we continue to see the state drawing down their hold harmless replacement for us, and also our, sort of stepping up on our old hold harmless, trying to put all of those together on a map down the road. I see in our budget books, the more comprehensive piece, and councilors, I'm looking at page 22, the budget department identified a recurring gap, a recurring funding gap that starts to grow, basically in FY '20, from just a few million this year, all the way out to about 20 million in FY '23, if we, based on current projections of recurring funding. I think what I'm curious, we've always, I know this sounds crazy when you're dealing with big numbers, but a $10 million gap, we've always been able to work through with vacancy savings and other things and working through. 20 starts to get above and beyond our ability to do, sort of, from this process. I'm curious, what do you see long-term in our ability to close that gap? And I think what I'm also curious, that as the new online sales tax, thanks for that, you have great talent, as the new online sales tax balloons, sort of, in its payments to the city in '22, how does that long-term leave us? Does it compensate totally for what the state is taking away on harmless? And do those two compensate for each other, or where are we in the end of the day?
Madam Chair, Counselor, thank you for your questions. And first, I'd like to just point out that the five-year forecast, which is the data you're looking at in page 22, that was done in December, and of course, there's been some changes.
That's better.
And so the landscape has changed quite a bit, and one of the big contributing factors, of course, is the new revenue for internet taxes. In fact, we've done some analysis, and we believe that out of these first two years, that could be in the amount of $20 million.
I'm sorry, in terms of gap, or we've closed the gap?
No, of additional revenue.
So that would close the gap.
So that would close the gap, and also the economy is holding very steady. And we have been following both the local economy and national economy, and things look a little bit brighter than we thought. We thought, in our pessimistic scenario, in the five-year forecast, we were actually looking at forecasting a mini recession. Right now, it doesn't look like that will happen. Let's cross our fingers. But certainly, the economy is looking a little bit better. We do see that the state is helping us with the internet tax. And with that, we feel a little bit more confident that this gap is not going to be as large and will be manageable.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I just want to make that point. I think we're adding a significant amount of new positions and a new recurring, about 11% or so, plus or minus. But it sounds like we're closing that gap, and we can feel confident that that's recurring. That's not just recurring next year, but down the road, and these new sort of taxes will help us close that. Is that fair?
I would agree with that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Counselors, any other questions? So Ms. Martinez? Any questions of directors? I believe everyone is here except for the city clerk, who you had a shot at her and missed it, so. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Martinez. If not, I believe next on the agenda is to introduce the ordinances. Therefore, I will introduce R 138, appropriating funds for operating the government of the city of Albuquerque for fiscal year 2020. City of Albuquerque for Fiscal Year 2020, beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020, Adjusting Fiscal Year '29 Appropriations and Appropriating Capital Funds. I move a deferral to May 2nd. There's a motion in a second for deferral till May 2nd. All in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed, motion carries. And next is R. 139, Establishing One-Year Objectives for the City of Albuquerque in Fiscal Year 2020 to Meet Five-Year Goals. I move deferral to May 2nd. There's a motion in a second to defer till May 2nd. All those in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed, no. Next is R. 140, Establishing the City of Albuquerque's Administration of the Group Self-Insurance Fund for Providing Medical Coverage for Employees and of the Participating Entities, Creating a New Group Self-Insurance Fund 710 in Fiscal Year 2020. I move deferral to May 2nd. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed, motion passes. Last is O. 55, Amending the Municipal Solid Waste Landfill Tire Disposal Fee, sorry, move deferral to May 2nd. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed, motion carries. I believe that's the end of the, oh, Counselor Sanchez.
I do have a couple of questions for the chief and the police department. I know I've already bypassed my time to ask that question.
Go right ahead, Counselor Sanchez, we have plenty of time.
Thank you.
And Ms. Nayar?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Martinez is prepared to do a budget-by-budget review, I mean, by department, but if you don't want to do it, that's also fine with us, so, yeah. If you want to go straight to questions, that's fine, I just wanted you to know we have that.
Counselors, would you like to hear a department-by-department budget? Apparently not. Counselor Sanchez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a couple of questions for Chief Guyer. My first question is in regards to DMD taking over the crossing guards. And I think currently, the Albuquerque Police Department oversees that department. I mean, what expertise or experience does DMD have in traffic?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, as the chief gets ready to speak, I wanted to point out sort of the backstory of why we made this choice. It actually arose out of some of the tragedies that we've experienced in this current fiscal year, where, you know, that resulted in some great improvements to traffic with some hog lights added. But what we realized at that point was that it was really, there was a lack of coordination between the crossing guard program and the streets and traffic control programs. So we felt that the move to DMD would allow those communications to happen better. For example, when there's a special event or something happening at APS, they would notify APD regarding the crossing guard issue, but then there was not a formal communication challenge to tell our streets folks so that they could do things like make sure the signalization was set for school times. So the DMD Security Division is working on training to make sure that everybody is sort of up to speed on traffic control training and working closely with APD to make sure that all of that happens, so that the necessary expertise from Metro Traffic Division is transferred over to management at DMD, and of course, APD will continue to be available as a resource. But we think that this will actually result in some major improvements in coordination with the public schools.
Well, can't they not coordinate with the setup currently, and DMD work closely with the Albuquerque Police Department? I mean, has that not worked in the past?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, I think it has not been without its problems. I think everybody's tried very hard to make it work, but we think that this will just increase efficiencies in that way.
And what expertise does DMD have in traffic? Well, we know that APD has the expertise to deal with these issues.
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, the expertise would come from the traffic and streets divisions, so they have the deeper understanding of sort of signalization, speed, and all those things that we do to make our streets safer, as opposed to the enforcement role that APD plays with traffic enforcement. And I didn't mean to preempt the chief, so he can also respond, I just wanted to get that backstory out there.
Chief, before you respond, Counselor Gibson, do you have a question first?
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. So I tend to see your logic in moving it to DMD, however, there's still going to be a very necessary communication, and I would like to get more confidence that that's going to happen, because it's not happening right now, right? We all acknowledge that they have something in the late afternoon or evening that's not getting communicated to traffic, but still, we'll have to communicate between security and traffic engineering. Isn't that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair and Counselor Gibson, we do intend to make this a smooth transition, but we will also maintain a succession plan with the police department, the traffic units specifically, and our officers as well, that deal with, like you said, after-school crossings. You know, sometimes there's shortages, we get a lot of times, these are some of the retired people that hold these positions, and they get sick, and it's inclement weather, we have to cover some positions that way as well. So we have that system in place, and again, DMD hasn't done this before directly, so we're gonna keep our, one of our community service aides, who certainly runs that program, he's a sworn officer with the department, but part-time, one of our retired officers, we're gonna keep him there for a period of time to make sure, ensure that transition works well, as well as, we're gonna provide some training for DMD personnel as well to make sure that they are up to speed, and we'll continue some type of oversight, if not direct supervision, of the program, just because traffic is one of our priorities.
Madam Chair, if I may, one...
Yes, Counselor Gibson, go ahead.
Thank you. So, you know, it always seemed most logical to me that APS run this program. Have we tried to negotiate with them, maybe even fund the program for them, because, you know, they are right there, they know what they're doing, they know when they're going to have special events at night and weekends, and, you know, have we tried that?
Madam Chair and Counselor Gibson, yes, we have. We've had several discussions. At this point, it seems like they've declined, taking that over themselves, although, as you point out, they would be the logical first choice. At this point, the best we can ask for is that they do keep us informed of special events, or any type of other activity that would draw extra traffic to a certain area, or extra foot traffic from students that may be attending different events that are near commercial areas where they may cross streets, or just at different times of day when rush hours or some heavy traffic might be anticipated. Unfortunately, that's the best we can get from them at this time.
Right. So did we offer the one point four million so they could continue running it?
I'll defer that to Ms. Nayar.
Madam Chair, Counselor Gibson, yeah, we've tried this on all the levels, so we've tried, you know, with money, without money, with an MOU, we've tried it, you know, head-to-head, COO-to-COO, police chief-to-police chief, there's just no traction for that transfer from that end. We would encourage you, if you would like to reach out on the elected-to-elected level, that we would fully support a move of this program to APS.
Thank you.
Ms. Nayar, just one question, and then Counselor Borrego has a question also. How does this affect staffing? Will there be any additional employees needed on either one of the departments that's now, both departments are going to be working on it? What's going on?
Madam Chair, the budget is just a straight transfer over, there's no need to add additional positions.
Thank you. Ms. Borrego, Counselor Borrego, and then Counselor Sanchez.
Madam President, my issue is a different issue, so I'd like to wait until we're done with this.
Are there any other questions? I think we're finished with this. Counselor Borrego, if you'd like to...
Okay, my question is addressed to Ms. Martinez, actually, so thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Just a moment, please. Actually, Counselor Sanchez, who'd asked to speak first, has questions of you, of the police, so if you don't mind, Counselor Borrego.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a couple more questions, Chief. One is in regards to the number of sworn officers that are working on the street. I am very pleased to see that from April of last year to April of this year, we've gone from five hundred and twenty to six hundred. The total number of sworn officers today are nine fifty-five. That is still only sixty-two point eight-two percent of the sworn officers that are working on the streets of our city. Are we trying to get those numbers up?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, yes. As a matter of fact, at the end of this month, the class that graduated just recently, that's part of their last of a four-month OGT, on-the-job training, will be hitting those streets. And the majority of those, if not all of them, I think all of them actually are going into field positions. They'll only, as far as the net gain, though, some of the, we'll be backfilling officers that are gonna go to, from the field currently, to some of the, a small number to investigative positions or other specialty positions. It's a small number. The majority of those thirty that are coming, I think it's twenty-nine, because we have one on hold still for train, the majority of those will go into field positions, and we do have those assignments already ready to go.
And we are looking at retirements also. Are a lot of the officers staying now with the additional benefits?
Initially, yes. I mean, obviously, some of these people are looking for a higher pay raise, Counselor, I mean, a higher rate of pay based on years of service, and so that's referred to as a top-three, so we anticipate those officers will stay, the new officers, as will with the new pay raise, existing or incumbent officers that are also trying to achieve that goal.
And Madam Chairman, one last question regarding the issue. Again, we've got retirees that are leaving. My big concern right now is also police vehicles. You know, during the last lateral class, there wasn't enough vehicles for the police officers. Are we gonna have enough, looking at the budget here that you have, you know, worked on, are we going to have enough police vehicles for each and every one of the officers?
Yes, Madam Chair and Counselor Sanchez, we have achieved that goal. I have some of our operations support people that deal with fleet. We've had a number of vehicles already produced for us. We have a number that are on hold, ready to come out as soon as they're outfitted by the manufacturer, by the outfitter. So it looks like we will have enough, and actually some excess, for anticipating future growth.
So you're guaranteeing us that the next cadet class will have police vehicles?
I can guarantee that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may add, Counselor Sanchez, this is, but this concern is exactly why we're proposing to use some of this one-time, non-recurring money to put it in a lockbox for public safety vehicles going forward, so that we don't have to keep having this conversation.
Thank you. We appreciate not having this conversation every year. Counselor Davis, and then Counselor Borrego.
And we appreciate the lockbox, Ms. Nayar, thank you. Chief, and this is just a request, if you could help us, just to follow up on conversations we've had at a couple of previous council meetings to get here. The administration is proposing or requesting fifty-three new sworn police positions for next year. If you could help us break out how the department intends to assign those new positions, I know we've had conversations about the needs for CACU, additional, maybe auto theft and other things, in addition to neighborhood policing and field. That may not be, if you don't have it today, that's fine, but I think it's an interest of the council to determine where those will be assigned going forward.
Madam Chair and Counselor Davis, we actually have part of it done, and so if you want to have a separate discussion or a separate meeting, we can give you the breakdowns as far as where all personnel are currently assigned, where vacancies exist, and we're anticipating where we're gonna place those. And as you mentioned, some high-priority positions like CACU and sex crimes, some other units as well, dealing with the new gun initiatives, we'll have some increasing in staffing based on that.
That's great. And Madam Chair, I just want to say, I understand that the new sort of innovation staff has been helping to work through some of this stuff, and they've done a great job of helping us do that planning, and I want to encourage us to continue to do it. It's great, and thank you, we'd love to see that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it for now. You might get to come back up. Counselor Borrego, you had a question?
I did, thank you, Madam Chair. I think this question is directed to Ms. Martinez. The question I have is related to the internet sales tax, and I know you talked about the initiative moving forward with the state, and it's something that's weighed on my mind for a long time, and I'm happy that we're doing this. But I guess my question is more of an internal question with regard to tracking that, and how we intend to move forward internally. I know, you know, when we had the three-eighths percent public safety tax, you know, we've had some issues in actually tracking exactly how that's being spent, and so I think that the administration's working on that. But I guess, you know, I'd like to know how maybe the treasurer's office is looking at that particular issue, and how we're going to be moving forward in doing that, because it's not an easy thing to do.
Madam Chair and Counselor Borrego, so just to explain how this will work, it will work similar to GRT. So the city will not be collecting the taxes. The state tax and revenue department will collect the taxes on our behalf. And similar to how we receive monthly distributions of GRT, we will similarly, in two years, receive distributions from the state based on their collections from the companies. So our treasury and county will not have to do the detailed work around the collections, but we will reconcile to what we receive, and make sure that we feel that we are getting what we feel is the appropriate amount that we should receive as the city of Albuquerque, just similar to all the other local municipalities in the state.
And Madam Chair, just to follow up, and with regard to our software programs, I guess this is something that we can accommodate, or is it something that in time, we will be coming back to the council and asking for new software to prepare us for that?
So while they're talking, Madam Chair, Counselor Borrego, I think what we don't know at this point is whether Tax and Rev intends to separately state the internet tax on the distribution reports that we receive from them on a monthly basis. And as you know, those have been the subject of some concern, I think we're suing the department over them. So maybe as part of that, we can resolve that question, but I think it's an important point, that we need to work closely with Tax and Rev to make sure that we are understanding exactly what portion of our overall revenue is coming from those internet sales.
And if this would help, we would set up a separate account within our own system in order to move the distribution into that account, so we could track it separately from the other tax revenue. We wouldn't want to combine it, because that would make it, of course, harder for us to reconcile and to appropriate. Right now, we don't have any restrictions on the use of that new revenue, but we will have a setup in our own system, similar to what we have today for the different GRT increments.
So you're basically telling me that our software programs will accommodate this currently? Okay. Because I, you know, I think into the future, and I'm wondering if we have that software available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a question regarding the distribution by tax and revenue, and I know there's been a concern by this council for a long time. Are we getting our fair share? Have we ever done an audit or requested an audit against the tax and revenue department to make sure that we are receiving our fair distribution of sales tax?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, I'll turn it over to the city attorney to talk about the status of the litigation, but basically, that was born from a frustration and inability to be able to get more detailed data without doing that, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, we have worked with outside counsel to represent the city's interests in this. There are several next steps that will happen, but there's some preliminary motion practice that are taking place right now in that lawsuit. Should be able to come back and to provide you with a more solid update within about a month.
So it's gotta be done through outside litigation? We cannot make that request by the state auditor?
Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, we actually tried to do this work when we were up there, and we were met with staunch opposition. They do not feel that the auditor is privy to the behind-the-scenes tax records under the taxpayer bill of rights. Oddly enough.
That sounds like a good question. One more question. We have been using hedge funds in the past to kind of control our fuel costs in the city, since we use quite a bit. Is that still in effect? Will we continue to do that, and what are your plans?
Madam Chair, so yes, actually, right now, our investment officer, Chris Daniels, is looking at opportunity to actually use the hedge approach in the future. We are not doing it right now, but that is something that we are evaluating closely.
Thank you.
I don't have a particular timeframe at this moment.
I'm just glad we're looking at it, that does help save money. Any other questions, counselors? All right. Any questions, this is your last shot. Any questions of any of the directors who are all here, except for the city clerk right now, because she was dismissed? Counselor Borrego? Counselor Borrego?
Is Carol Pierce in the audience? I had a question, just with regard to family and community services.
This is what happens when you sit in the back row. Director Pierce.
It's a good thing you're light on your feet. My question is related to the number of positions that are vacant in family and community services, and why there are so many. I just was curious about that.
Yes, thank you for asking that question, commissioners. Primarily, the vacancies that we have are related to our child development slots. They tend to be teachers. Right now, we've made a couple of practice changes, because those are important to fill. We have that posting up continually. We've really improved our advertising out to professional organizations to get those slots filled. I think, and I don't have the numbers right at my fingertips, but I know we are, we have the lowest number of vacancies that we have in our child development right now of positions than we've had in the past. But those have been, I think that by having that, those positions posted continually, that's been an improvement, but we're continually working to fill those slots. I will say, in the future, it's not part of this budget request, we would like to also, thank you, think about what we can do to become more competitive with other agencies also in our community. We do often lose people, because they can go get those similar jobs in other agencies in our community, and get paid a higher salary.
Thank you, Director.
I think the number was 49, I think, I think that's what I saw in here. Forty-nine vacancies. And that's why I was asking the question, because it seemed like an awful lot of vacancies, and I just wonder if, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, so, but you guys are working to fill those.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
I have one comment, not a question.
Counselor Sanchez?
I am just very pleased to see that there are no federal grant repayments for non-compliance. Thank you for your work.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And Counselor Sanchez, and every counselor, thank you for mentioning that, and I just do really want to acknowledge the family and community services team. We've worked very hard to make sure this year was free from that kind of problem, and really, we've got a great team working on that. So, thank you for asking.
Thank you. Counselors? Thank you, directors and city staff for being here, and everyone else who came to hear what we had to say, and we will see you May 2. Meeting is adjourned.